Vice Mayor Bushy.
President.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yiran Skolari.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here this evening, so good evening and welcome. And again, apologize, we're starting a few minutes later. Whether you're joining us in person or watching online, we truly appreciate that you are participating. I always like to start our meetings by recognizing the incredible effort of our city staff. They are the ones who keep San Rafael running and rolling, often quietly and often juggling seven, several urgent priorities at once. Their dedication continues to impress me and all of us up here on the dais. So thank you. At the same time, we know that the challenges we face locally do not exist in a vacuum. They reflect a broader national climate that continues to test our values and our resilience. Across our nation, we continue to witness acts of political violence. Let me be clear. This is not acceptable, and we cannot allow it to become normalized. Instead, we commit ourselves to the hard but rewarding work of coming together, collaborating, and listening to one another with respect. Even when we don't see eye to eye, we can stand side by side in service of something greater than ourselves, and that is a strong and resilient community where every voice matters and every person belongs. And actually, tonight's presentation on the community plans is an example of just that and how we'll continue to show up for each other in San Rafael. If you've attended a meeting before, you know that we like to include a land acknowledgement as part of our opening. This statement is in addition to the work that we do with the tribe on an ongoing basis. We thank the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is traditionally home to the coastal Mewok people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria, and we honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. Thank you for being here. I'll now turn to the city clerk, who can describe how people can participate in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Before we begin, I'd like to announce that tonight's meeting will include Spanish language interpretation, simultaneous and consecutive interpretation, provided by qualified interpreters for Agenda Item 7A, East Centrefal and Canal Community Collective Plans in Action. If watching on Zoom, you can join the Spanish channel by clicking the global icon. It's the interpretation icon in the toolbar. And if you're attending in person and you don't have access to the Zoom meeting on your phone, you're welcome to come see me, and I can get you set up with a device so you can hear the meeting in Spanish. As a reminder, we do ask everyone participating this evening to speak slowly to allow our interpreters to effectively express your comments. I'll remind you again before 7:00 A. Just so everyone remembers to speak slowly. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube for members of the public wishing to provide public comment. Displayed on the podium and the projector is a timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of Centrefal you live in, or if you're from outside of Centrefal. We do offer closed captioning for this meeting on Zoom. You can select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable that feature. And if you're experiencing any technical difficulties, you can email me at city.clerk@cityofcentrefal.org. Additionally, community members may request reasonable accommodations to provide public comments virtually, and they can also do that by emailing me at city.clerk@cityofcentrefal.org. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with the city manager and council member reports. I'll turn to city manager Alilovic.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and the community. I have a number of things to share tonight. As we're going to hear in a few minutes, there's a proclamation for National Preparedness Month. So I just wanted to take the pause to appreciate our Office of Emergency Services, Fire and Police Department, and all the city staff who dedicate themselves to this work year round. The Fire Department's doing something a little fun and different. This year, they're hosting a downtown emergency go-bag crossword game, where you can pick up a crossword sheet at the library. There's 15 participating businesses where you go to collect clues, complete a puzzle, and then you can win a go-bag prize. So there's more information on the city's website. It's also Transit Month. September is Transit Month, and we are working with Transportation Authority of Marin and other partners to promote alternative commute options, such as smart bus or work. And there are rewards, so you can choose alternative ways to get around. If you go to Marin, www.marincommutes.org, you can log in your eligible commute days. And there's a dashboard. You can earn gift cards and monthly and annual prize drawings, all the way from $20 to $500 is the annual raffle. I wanted to mention that the city has posted a new planning, major development planning projects map on the website. I want to appreciate Director Mooney and the digital team and community development staff are working on this. It's an interactive map that goes, that shows all of the development projects that are proposed, approved, and active in all the neighborhoods across San Rafael. We're also working continuously on streamlining our processes to support the developers in moving their projects through the public process in support of city council's priority for getting more housing built in San Rafael. So you can get more information on the city's website, Major Planning Projects 2025, to view the map. I also want to mention that tomorrow at the County Board of Supervisors meeting, the county will be considering funding for the potential city park at 620 Canal, which we've talked about in the past. So it's an exciting milestone. I want to appreciate the county and since Supervisor Redoni is in the audience for their consideration in the city's grant application for $1.35 million of funding to purchase the former boatyard at 620 Canal. The city has dedicated $500,000 toward the purchase as well. The project is a collaborative effort between the city, the county, and the Trust for Public Land. Canal Alliance is also partnering with us on this project. I especially wanted to thank Erica Williams from the Trust for Public Lands, who has been a staunch advocate and supporter of getting this over the finish line. So acquiring the land is a first step toward a long-term, I think, 30-year community priority to turn the site into a new community park and a safe walking and biking connection between the canal and downtown. So we're in the process of doing a feasibility study on the bridge, but I want to be clear that there's a lot, lot more funding would be needed and a lot more study before a bridge can become a reality in the future. The Chamber of Commerce has an event coming up called Level Up Marin Employment Expo. So they're hosting this event on September 25 from 4 to 7 at the B Street Community Center downtown. It's a community-wide job fair in partnership with San Rafael employers, including the city of San Rafael and the County of Marin, and the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay. So there'll be over 600 positions that are currently open that employers are seeking applicants for across government, nonprofit, and private sector. They're encouraging you to bring your resumes if you have them and reach out to the Chamber of Commerce if you have any questions. A few more events, fun things going on. The San Rafael Library over here at the Carnegie Building is reopening. And after some substantial major upgrades, Public Works has done an amazing job facilitating that, as well as the Library and Recreation Department. It's been a big lift to move down to the pop-up, which everybody loved, and then to move back. So thank you to Director Miller and Director Kufa. On Saturday, there'll be a celebration on the 20th, this Saturday from 12 to 5. So there'll be a ribbon cutting at noon and lots of fun, family-friendly activities, food, live music, and that sort of thing. West End Block Party is Friday, September 19th and 26th from 6 to 9 downtown from Streets F to G. Porch Fest is happening, presented by the Gerstel Park Neighborhood, September 21st, this Sunday from 12 to 5 in Gerstel Park Neighborhood. Movies in the Park, we have The Wild Robot, presented by the city's Library and Recreation Team on the 26th, the next coming Friday, from 6:45 to 8:45. That one's in Gerstel Park. We have a lot happening. Hops and Vines Stroll, which is presented by the San Rafael Business Improvement District, is September 27th from 2 to 6 downtown from Fourth Street to Lincoln. And you can get more information and purchase sampling tickets for local wines and breweries at downtownsanrefal.org/hopsandvinesstroll. And then lastly, Marin Sanitary Service has its Customer Appreciation Day coming up on Sunday, September 28th from 9 to 2 at 535 Jacobi Street. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. I'll turn to my colleagues, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Along with Councilmember Loren Skolari, I attended the Marin Transit Board meeting on September 8. We heard a report on the bus parking and repair facility that will be built by Marin Transit at 1075 Francisco Boulevard East. Importantly, there is a community benefit meeting scheduled regarding that facility for September 24th at 5:00 P. M. This is to get input from the community on things that that site might be able to bring to that particular area of our city. So September 24th, 5:00 P. M., it's a Zoom meeting. I also attended the board meeting of the Central Marin Sanitation Agency. They've, you know, this is kind of boring. They've won two more financial reporting awards. They keep adding them up. So their, their, their reporting continues to be excellent. And last Friday was District 3 Day here in San Rafael. I was delighted to attend, along with the mayor and the city attorney and council member Kurtz, the Marin Presiding Judge Briner's Memorial Bench at the, it is located at the very end of the break wall in Andy's of Loch Lomond. And I encourage everyone to go out and look at the bench and really consider the inscription there. I won't tell you what it says. I want you to go and read it and, and appreciate it and think about it in that context. Also, on that very same day, and it's in Peacock Gap Park, and we were delighted, Councilmember Kurtz and I, to hold the ribbon so that the mayor could cut the ribbon for the new playground equipment there. It's very exciting to have something new for the youngsters to play on. I'd like to thank Directors Kofa and Miller and their team for being there. It was, it was a great, a great coming together with the new playground, and it was perfectly scheduled with Movies in the Park, and delighted to have both the Fire Department and the Police Department there doing their, their special kind of outreach. So thank you all from District 3.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Yiran Skolari?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So in addition to Marin Transit, I attended the 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony, and it was very well-attended and, you know, it's, it's an event to, for the community to remember the lives that they were lost and honor them on that day. So I really want to thank our Fire Commissioner, John Chang, and all the other fire commissioners, especially our Fire Department. Our Police Department was there as well. And I think this is my second year attending, and it's extremely moving, and I really thank you for doing this and keep it alive. So thank you. They had the, the backpipes playing as well, and that's incredible. So I also attended the Canal Alliance Leadership Academy graduation, Cohort Number Nine. I see Chris Parra right there, and Aaron as well from Canal Alliance. This was the ninth cohort of leaders in, in the community. So the week before, I had the honor to be with them and talking about governments and how to be involved, commissions. So it's really great to see the amazing leaders that we have in the community and how they get elevated through this leadership class. Today also, we start with the Hispanic Heritage Month. I know that we had a resolution last week, but this is like the perfect example of our leaders and how they are thriving. They were very interested to, on the Police Academy, that I think is going to be coming in Spanish in the spring. And it was just like a great opportunity to have conversations with them and elevate them. They are already great leaders, and how we can make them great leaders involved with the city and other sorts of governments. So, and, oh, and this Saturday is the Coastal Cleanup Day. So I'm going to be at Pickleweed around 9 o'clock. So if anybody would like to join us, it would be a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
Thank you. With Mayor Kate, we attended the City-County Schools Quarterly Meeting. We all get together and talk about shared, shared topics. Ember Stomp, there was a great showing. Thanks to the county for support of that, as well as so many organizations. The focus this year was really on how, how homes need to be prepared, and a lot of the vendors were about the types of products that you can use to help to get to Zone Zero. With Councilmember Hill, we attended the Aegis opening and the ribbon cutting, and with Fabio. We enjoyed seeing Fabio. The Contempo, yeah, you missed it. Mary Beth was really disappointed. We attended Contempo's annual barbecue. I attended the age-friendly meeting for San Rafael. And I, just as a reminder, this Wednesday is the Senior Fair. And if you are an older adult, which is over 60 and over, if you're a caregiver, or if you know somebody, the fair is much more than for older adults. It really is for the whole community. And early thank you to San Rafael. Parks and Rec is going to be there. Library is there. Goldenaires will be there. Age Friendly will be there. So San Rafael has a large representation at the Senior Fair, and it really is a great resource for the whole community.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items to report on. I will add to Councilmember Kurtz's report about Aegis Living San Rafael, that Fabio did give away his secret of his youthfulness. He said he does not drink. He said that many times. Anyway, and Joan London graced us with her presence as well. The other event was on Thursday, September 11. The Sun Valley Neighborhood Association meeting was held at Rotary Manor that evening. We mostly focused on safety through the Fifth Avenue corridor. And I would just thank all the attendees, including the organizers, the president of Sun Valley Neighborhood Association, Jim Rubin, who has served in his role there for eight strong years, and the principal of Sun Valley Elementary School, Kristen Hancock, with whom we will continue to coordinate our efforts for safer passageways to and from the elementary school. And that's my report.
Thank you. I don't think additional, because you've all reported out on the meetings that I was attending with you. So thank you, as always, for not only the work you do on the dais, but out in the community every single day. We accept public comments on anything you just heard. The city manager or the council member reports. If you'd like to make a comment, now is your opportunity to do so. Okay, not to anyone. I'm going to close the public comment. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the council member would, would like to hold from the consent agenda? Not seeing any. I will open up the public comment. Items 4A through 4E, you would like to comment on any of those items, now is your opportunity. Items 4A through 4E, you would like to comment on any of those items, now is your opportunity. Not seeing any comments, I'll bring it back. And I know Councilmember Hill will make a motion, but you also had a comment you wanted to make on one of the items as you make that motion.
Yes. Before we make the motion, I just wanted to call out on 4E, Transportation Authority Marin Safe Pathways to School Funding Agreement. This is really important. I don't expect that everybody reads every item in the consent calendar, but this one's really important. This secures $1.1 million in Measure AA funding for pathways to schools. These are schools in our communities, not the least of which are, and I just want to name them, the Venetia Valley K through 8, Laurel Dell and Davidson Middle Schools, as well as Terrelanda High School, Vallecito Elementary, Mark Day, and Sun Valley Elementary School. All four are getting projects to help improve safety for pedestrians and cyclists going to and from school. So very exciting, $1.1 million to our community. So thank you voters in 2018 for making that real. And with that, I would like to move that we approve the consent calendar.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yoren Scalati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. We have a special presentation before we get to a public hearing. We take public comment prior to reading our proclamations, and tonight it's a proclamation on recognizing National Preparedness Month. If you would like to comment on this item, now is your opportunity. Okay, not seeing any members of the public, I will go ahead and read the proclamation. This is in recognition of September 2025 being National Preparedness Month. Whereas in San Rafael, our community is susceptible to human-caused and natural disasters, including earthquakes, wildfires, floods, and other large-scale emergencies we cannot predict. And whereas government agencies and disaster organizations cannot bear the sole responsibility to prepare for and respond to disasters. And whereas working in partnership with our community members, community emergency response teams, also known as CERT, and community organizations, we can minimize together the loss of lives, injuries, and help our community find a new normal post any emergency. Whereas this year, the City of San Rafael will focus on the global theme, "Everyday Counts, Act For Resilience Today," with an emphasis on preparedness for all community members. Each week of September 2025, the San Rafael Office of Emergency Services and Public Information Officers will share weekly themes and preparedness information with our community on social media. Please feel free to reshare with your own social media, on your own social media. And whereas with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, facing potential reforms and budget cuts, now more than ever, San Rafael residents and business owners need to be prepared and ready for disasters. Therefore, I, Kate Cohen, Mayor, on behalf of the city and the city council and all residents, proclaim the month of September 2025 as Emergency Preparedness Month. We thank you all for doing your part to get ready for those unforeseen events that we know will occur at some time in our community. Thank you. All right, we are at Item 6A, and I realize I was probably speaking way too fast. Sorry to the interpreter. We have a public hearing on the Triennial Building Code Ordinance Amendments. Welcome.
Greg Minor with the Community Economic Development Department. I'm filling in for my colleague Cory Bidoff, who is enjoying a vacation at the moment, I believe. So you're stuck with me. I'm just going to give a little background on this item and then open it up for public comment and question. So the catalyst for this update to the building code was the passage of State Assembly Bill 130 this summer. It was a housing streamlining bill attached to the budget, which included a provision that limits the ability of local governments to change the building code or residential code, excuse me, after September 30th of this year, with some limited exceptions. So the, this item was initially presented to this body August 18th with some code updates to align with the state code updates, as well as establish some energy efficiency upgrades that would kick in in 2027 and 2029. As the councilmembers may be aware, the following day, the California Energy Commission notified staff that the 2029 updates wouldn't be approved because that would rely on an update to the building code, the state building code that would take place in the future of 2028. And also, the ordinance that was presented to the council in August didn't include an analysis, a cost-effectiveness analysis specific to San Rafael. So a revised version was presented to this body on September 2nd, which struck the 2029 upgrades and included a cost-effectiveness memo specific to San Rafael. And then tonight is the second reading of that same ordinance, and upon its passage would become effective. So with that, open it up for any comments and questions.
Thank you. And it is poignant that it's a triennial, and it is the third time that we're actually talking about this issue up here. Or try hearing. So any additional questions that the council has on this item? Okay. Not seeing, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Hill.
Just thank you, staff, for trying to approach it with such novelty. I, I don't think that the state agency appreciated the novelty, but I did, so thank you.
Well said. I'll open public comment on this item. If you would like to make a comment, you're welcome, but you're not required to say your name and what part of San Rafael you would live in. Doesn't sound like you're on. Okay, there we go.
Good evening. I'm Bill Carney with Sustainable San Rafael. We remain supportive of the adoption of these strengthened building code provisions proposed by staff, and including the higher target levels effective in 2027 for San Rafael's existing Flex Code Path Reach Code for building rehabilitations. Based on the discussion at your last meeting, we urge that the city avail itself of the exemptions that are allowed under AB 130 to further increase these Flex Path target levels by considering further amendments during the next code cycle in 2028. That is a chance for the city to set the targets that you originally, that were originally proposed and that you found cost-effective at its August 18th meeting, going back to the first meeting on this topic. And those targets were set for the entire six-year period. So this will give us, at the same time you intended then, this will give us, you still have a chance to get them in place during the next code cycle three years ago. This step tonight is, is one step towards the very important goal of getting complete building electrification in San Rafael. When we achieve that goal, we will have reduced our greenhouse gas footprint by 30% when you add in all clean electricity to, to fuel those buildings. So that's a huge step forward, and this is one, that's a huge goal, and this is one step forward towards it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, as well as your letter that we received. Any other comments on this item? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the council for any additional comments. And I'll request a motion, and I do want to thank Sustainable San Rafael for their ongoing engagement, as well as city staff for getting this in the right place for San Rafael. Councilmember Yoren Scalati, would you like to make a motion on this item?
Yes, thank you. I would like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
That's right. And I'll read it after.
Okay.
I'm like.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yoren Scalati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries 5-0, and I requested the city clerk reads the title of the ordinance.
For the third time. The Ordinance Amending Title 12 Building Regulations of the Amunicipal Code of the City of San Rafael by Repealing Title 12 and Amending Title 12 thereof, adopting the 2025 Edition of the California Building Code, the California Residential Code, the California Mechanical Code, the California Plumbing Code, the California Electrical Code, the California Existing Building Code, the California Green Building Standards Code, the California Energy Code, and the California Reference Standards Code with appendices and amendments herein, adopting the 2024 Edition of the International Property Maintenance Code and the International Pool and Spa Code with amendments, amending Chapter 12.360 Single Family Model Reach Code, Flex Path herein, and adopting findings of fact supporting the amendments to the code.
Well done. Thank you. So this evening, we are delighted to have the East San Rafael and Canal Community Collective Plans in Action Progress Report, and we are all in for a fantastic conversation, and I will invite the City Manager to start this item.
Good evening again. I'm going to make some opening remarks while the staff get the presentation ready to go here. Of course, we always start with gratitude, so I want to express my gratitude to our dedicated staff and to the seven partner agencies who we've been working with on this project for months. It's been truly a collective effort. I'm remembering Madam City Clerk to speak slowly. And we wouldn't be here without their partnership and commitment. I also want to introduce Carrie Fugat.
Fugat.
Carrie is our Climate Justice and Engagement Manager. She's been with us for a number of months. She's led this project with incredible skill and dedication. Carrie, along with the rest of our city team, has carried a heavy lift to bring us to this point. At the same time, Civic Engagement Manager Phil Agrelius has been developing an inclusive resident-led engagement program and guide, which has a nexus to this work. It's about strengthening how the city connects with residents and ensuring that all community voices are truly at the center of our decision-making. While this particular project is focused on East San Rafael and the Canal neighborhood, its impact is much broader. The lessons we are learning here are shaping how we engage across the entire city, and that approach will be captured in the program that FEL is leading. One message we've heard again and again from residents is really clear. People want to know what the city has done with their feedback, and that's exactly what we're committed to doing. We're focused on increasing transparency and accountability by reporting back on what we've accomplished, the challenges we faced, why some community priorities have yet to been, to be addressed. And just as importantly, we want to validate that the priorities that we're still working on are in fact still the community's top concern, so we can make adjustments as needed. Our ultimate goal is simple but powerful, to be the most responsive government we can be. That means co-creating with the community, supporting resident-led planning efforts, working together to reverse the conditions of inequity and injustice. I also want to take a moment to introduce our partners from James Lima Planning and Development Team, James Lima, here in the front, and Bella Conway. We chose this firm because they are a mission-driven firm that is committed to dismantling systems of oppression. They have some background that James will share with you in a bit that really helps connect what we're doing here to a big project they did in New York years ago. Mayor Kate and I first connected with them during the Just Cities Mayoral Fellowship, which the mayor is going to share about in just a moment.
during our day. This is one. We'll be up and running in just a moment. I will start. Okay, I'm, I'm kicking off. We thank you for your patience as we got to that kickoff moment. So as Christine mentioned, I was part of the U.S. Conference of Mayors' Mayoral Fellowship. I have just a few comments. Luckily, I just have two slides to speak to because we have much more interesting things to get to. And I did write down some comments, otherwise I would go on and on because I am so excited about this evening. So tonight marks an important step in San Rafael's journey to becoming an even more just and equitable city. Last year, as you know, I was one of seven mayors nationwide to be part of the Mayoral Fellowship through the Mayor's Institute on City Design. So over the course of the fellowship, which lasted last, all of last year, we examined how to change entrenched systems that create racial, economic, and social barriers, and how to build cities where everyone can thrive. What that means very simply is recognizing that the status quo doesn't work for everyone. The pandemic laid bare those inequities in powerful ways, and it was one of the key reasons that I applied for the fellowship. And I really wanted to help ensure that San Rafael learns from that moment, and we can do even better going forward. And one of the most important outcomes from working with the resource teams at the fellowship and the experts was this realization. The challenge isn't a lack of planning, it's that we often have too many plans. The real work is learning how to figure, how do we bring those plans together, prioritize them with community input, and make sure they're aligned with funding so they can actually be carried out. Okay, now this slide, wait, go back, go back, go back. Okay, so, I'm almost done. So this image is of a document that every mayor completed at the start of the fellowship. It asks us to define what makes your community strong? What holds it back? What are your values? Where are the injustices built into the systems that we rely on to make important decisions that directly impact our community? So tonight's presentation is the first step in applying that same lens here in San Rafael. We're not diving into the conditions of injustice in the community this evening, but we are beginning the collective work of identifying how to reverse them. And before I hand this over to staff, I want to underscore one truth that's already been alluded to by the City Manager, and I know staff will mention it as well. None of this work is done in isolation. Every agency represented in this update needs one another to succeed at their own missions. Collaboration isn't optional. It is essential. And I'm grateful that our community partners...
Mayor Kate, I'm so sorry. If I could just ask you to slow down, I'm getting a notice for interpretation. Thank you.
Thank you. My mother tells me that as well, so thank you. I'm grateful that our community and government partners recognize this and are eager to work alongside San Rafael and to move this work together. So with that, I will now turn it over to staff to walk us through the framework and the next steps. Carrie?
Thank you so much, Mayor. My name is Carrie Fugat, Climate Justice and Engagement Manager, and I'm going to start with our table of contents, our agenda, so if we can pull up the agenda. So we are really honored and so excited to share with you many, many months of very collaborative work. Our goals for tonight are outlined here, so we'll start with some context setting. This work does not happen in a vacuum, so we'll talk a little bit about the, the context of what's going on in the canal and how this work connects to that. And then we'll dive into the Collective Plans in Action Framework and our esteemed consultants, JLP plus D, will talk about the framework, the status update, the data summary, and how we'll be able to use a really fantastic virtual database spreadsheet tool at the end of this project. And then we'll talk about next steps as well. So to start, to contextualize this work, I'll take a few minutes to very briefly describe the planning and policymaking landscape in East San Rafael and Canal neighborhood. You'll notice that these projects are occurring in close collaboration to ensure coordination and integration of the work being done. Nuestro Canal, Nuestro Futuro is a resident-led planning process that will result in the Canal Vision Plan, and this plan will identify priority strategies that will shape the built environment and infrastructure in the canal and... strategies that will shape the built environment and infrastructure in the canal. And the city is very grateful to be a part of the Nuestro Canal Nuestro Futuro process. The Canal Promise Neighborhood Investable Plan will be developed alongside this Nuestro Canal Nuestro Futuro resident-led planning process and result in a strategic plan aimed at generating targeted investment in strategies that improve educational and economic outcomes for all children from cradle to career. And we're really grateful for Mayor, Councilmember Lawrence Gallati, and city staff for sitting on the steering committee of this effort as well. And this work is a collaborative effort led by Canal Alliance and the Marin Promise Partnership, and the resulting Canal Vision Plan will encapsulate Nuestro Canal Nuestro Futuro planning process as well as the Canal Promise work, with the goal of helping inform what is considered in the city of San Rafael's East San Rafael Specific Plan. So that brings me to the middle top. We've got the East San Rafael Specific Plan, which is a two-year planning process that will produce the framework of planning tools to guide the future of housing, economic development, and transportation in East San Rafael while responding to sea level rise. Though not in contract yet, we're very excited that consultant team awarded with this project includes Canal Alliance. The bottom row of this slide summarizes three key projects that will help enhance the success of the East San Rafael Specific Plan. Well, starting on the left is the Collective Plans in Action Project, which we'll hear about tonight, which will include a summary of community priorities as identified in prior planning and engagement efforts, so that the East San Rafael Specific Plan can build off of prior engagement and not repeat what's already been done. Additionally, the gap analysis from this project can be used to establish existing conditions, and the team of Nuestro Canal Nuestro Futuro intends to use the gap analysis in their community vision plan as well. The Sea Level Rise Feasibility Study is a collaborative project with the City Canal Alliance and Multicultural Center of Marin, working to explore the feasibility of different actions to reduce flood risks in East San Rafael, and this information will also be able to help inform the East San Rafael Specific Plan. And on the bottom right, we have the Development of the Community-Led Inclusive Engagement Program that will be informed by the findings of this Collective Plans in Action Project and reflects an investment in developing tools and resources for coordinated, responsive, and inclusive engagement citywide. And it also will inform the engagement strategies for the East San Rafael Specific Plan. And finally, in the top right corner, we have the city's 2025 through 2028 Strategic Plan, which you're obviously well aware of, and the East San Rafael Specific Plan, Collective Plans in Action Project, Sea Level Rise Feasibility Study, and the Community-Led Inclusive Engagement Program are all part of the city's three-year priorities. Next slide. This is just a quick look at how these projects play out geographically. So in East San Rafael Canal Neighborhood, we have the Canal Vision Plan, which is the Nuestro Canal Nuestro Futuro and Canal Promise Neighborhood work, and this Collective Plans in Action Report really focuses on that area. And then the East San Rafael area zooms out a little bit for the East San Rafael Specific Plan and Sea Level Rise Project, and of course, the Strategic Plan and Community Engagement Program is citywide. And looking at these same plans from a timeline perspective, this is a way to see what overlaps and what can inform different planning processes. And we want to highlight here, the stars offer a look at what current or recent or upcoming milestones are occurring in each of these projects. And what I want to highlight is that the Nuestro Canal Nuestro Futuro planning process lines up and aims to finish before the East San Rafael Specific Plan is completed, as does the Canal Promise Neighborhood, so that it can help inform and support that effort. And finally, today's conversation is zooming in on the Collective Plans in Action Progress Report, and you'll notice here that it's finishing up by the end of this year so that it can best inform the development of the East San Rafael Specific Plan. With that background on the landscape of planning projects in the canal and East San Rafael area, I will hand it over to James Lima of James Lima Planning and Development. Welcome, James.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm James Lima. I'm the JL in JLPD. The P is planning, grounded in community-led work, and the D is development, which relies on market-driven solutions and grounding that planning work in implementable, actionable strategies. It's really an honor and a pleasure to be with you tonight and to have worked with many of you over the past year. Thank you, Mayor, Council, city manager, and team. We will get into a lot of detail, so I'll be fairly brief, but this is our third community-driven canal district plan in recent years. And the one that we continue to work on is in Brooklyn, the Gowanus Canal, which has been community-led, but also an example of a new way of government and community groups across departments, across jurisdictions, to really work collaboratively toward equitable economic development. Our work has been as the trusted facilitator after rezoning for a major transformation of that part of old industrial Brooklyn to allow for the community's vision to move forward. And it's an example funded by the Ford Foundation of the way that everyone compromised, everyone brought their hopes and dreams to a project, and a vision plan was built around that. And then we, as facilitators, have been in place to hold the city to account, to say, what are all the things you said you would do to get this very ambitious district plan approved? And how do we make sure that there are conversations that can embrace that and to, again, to hold everyone to account? The key point about that process is that people from so many disparate agencies and jurisdictions are showing up as their best selves and bringing their enthusiasm because they feel part of a project, unlike sometimes when a government agency feels like they're being hauled in front of an oversight hearing of the legislature. There's another way of doing it, and I think you are already showing that leadership and a long history of intentional collaboration. So these are the kinds of projects we love working on. People often think that the obstacles to equitable investment in community revitalization is money, and our experience has just shown that that is actually not the case. The two critical pieces are a clear and compelling shared vision for your future that people understand and rally around, and the leadership to advance that. If you have those two things, the money will follow, I can assure you. With that, I want to turn it over to the person on our team who has done all the work, is Isabella Conway, who will walk you through the details of the plan. Thank you.
Hello. All right. So before we get into the data and initial findings, I'd like to walk us all through the framework to orient everyone here. So the purpose of this project, Collective Plans in Action, is to be used as a strategic tool for the city and the community. So not only will this project synthesize past years of planning and engagement in the canal district, but it will also provide opportunities for coordination across city departments and provide a setting for coming together, informing decisions, communicating progress for future planning efforts. And while this is now focused on the canal district, we've done the hard work of co-creating this methodology, and this now can be used as a replicable model in other communities and neighborhoods. And so I think that's one of the very exciting things about this project is that this can be done again. And so here on the right, we have the guiding principles that we have been referring to as we've created this process and as we draft the report, and that's transparency, alignment, accountability, coordination, and action. And you'll see these principles pop up again later in the presentation. As we go through each of the sections of this report, we'll be showing which section upholds which principles. So Carrie walked us through the six current planning initiatives happening in the community, but we took a look at 20 plans that were published over the past 10 years. And from those 20 plans, we identified 715 total initiatives. And these initiatives are formal commitments made by agencies and published plans, and these plans were from different scales. So we looked at three city-led and external plans focused on East San Rafael and the canal neighborhood, six city-led and one external plan that were at the citywide scale, and then six county-level plans. And in addition, there were four programs we reviewed. And the plans that we picked were covering areas that the city has responsibility for direct services and encapsulated initiatives directly related to East San Rafael. And then here you can see the beautiful covers of many of the plans that we analyzed. So here is zooming out, looking at the outline of the draft report. And right now, I will go through each of the sections, going through their purpose, so that each section is clear to those in the room. Starting with the executive summary, here we'll be providing just an overview, starting with goals, methods, key findings, an accessible summary for those who may not want to dig into the entire report. And then moving on to purpose and scope. So this is trying to explain why the project was conducted and what it's meant to achieve, and most importantly, how it can be used by community members and the city as a tool. Then the methodology section, this is really based in transparency. So we want to make it very clear how our findings were developed, describe our data sources and our analysis process. This was a complicated process involving a lot of collaboration, which we were very grateful for. I think it adds a lot of value to have the data and our findings grounded in the lived experience of those staff members doing the work day to day. And so this section will really highlight that process, and we'll get a little bit into the methodology today as well in further slides. The community sentiment chapter is where we analyzed and pulled out the engagement sections of each of the plans, and then we worked with Canal Alliance to identify a categorization framework for organizing the community sentiment. And we'll talk about that in more detail as well. But Canal Alliance's experience engaging with the community was really crucial in identifying how to organize such a large amount of engagement feedback. The implementation overview by topic area will be a quantitative analysis of implementation progress for the initiatives in each of the topic areas, and it will be paired with a narrative summary, so more qualitative information from city staff and external agencies. And we'll speak to that process as well as it's currently ongoing. In gaps in implementation and alignment, we'll be identifying what were community priorities, what agencies committed to, and then what was actually implemented, and where things stand today. And in opportunities for alignment, this section is really acting as the roadmap going forward, so highlighting ways that city and partner can really work together to address existing gaps, also identifying some priority focus areas for near-term action and potential governance and process improvements as well. And we have meetings with many of the stakeholders during this site visit that will be really informative for this section. Then the conclusion, summarizing everything again in an accessible way, and then also highlighting the importance of continued tracking. We're doing this project for a specific time period, but this can continue onwards as new plans are created. And then lastly, the appendices. So there is a lot of data that Carrie and I have sorted through, and so we want that to be available to everyone so that supplemental detail is provided and it can actually be used as a tool. So there will be a spreadsheet of all the initiatives organized into our categorization framework, and then there will also be a catalog of the plans and the extent of engagement material that was in each of the plans.
Bella, hold on one second. Madam City Clerk, I think we need to toggle our interpreter.
Yes, give me one moment.
We're ready. All right.
Thank you.
So we're coming to you today, currently in the process of drafting this report. So just want to orient you all to our current efforts, where we stand, and what some next steps look like. So work completed to date, we have completed the methodology and source materials, the community sentiment chapter, which included input from Canal Alliance, and the appendices. We have drafted several of the other chapters, which will also be informed by feedback from this visit and further one-on-one meetings with stakeholders. And then the final next steps will be drafting and completing the executive summary and the conclusion. So now, looking at those next steps on a timeline, this month, the city staff will be working with agency partners to develop that qualitative narrative that will be paired with our quantitative findings, that will contextualize the data in the day-to-day work. And then JLPD will be drafting Section 6 and 7, incorporating that narrative into our findings. And then in October, our goal is to submit the draft of the report for city feedback and review. And then we'll spend October through December incorporating that feedback with a final delivery by the end of the year. And then in 2026, city staff will be reporting back to the community about what has and hasn't started, whether community priorities have shifted since these plans were published, as the community priorities we identified are for that specific time the plans were published, not necessarily what's happening current day. And then city staff will also be gathering ideas for feedback loops moving forward. So now we'll get into some of the data. But before we get into the numbers, I want to go through the categorization framework, as there are several layers of topics, initiatives, and priorities here. So when we went through the plans, we first looked at the community engagement content, and from that content, we pulled out community priorities. And we then worked with Canal Alliance to ground-truth those community priorities to make sure it matched what they were seeing in their engagement with the community, and they helped us to come to these six topic areas: housing development and anti-displacement, transportation and mobility, economic mobility and development, climate resilience and environmental justice, parks and public spaces, and health and public safety. We then went through the plans and pulled out the initiatives and matched those to the community priority that was most aligned. And so further in the presentation, you'll see kind of the umbrella of the topic area, community priority, and relative initiatives. So each initiative was then assigned a status, and this was done in a process with Carrie and city staff, meeting with staff from city departments and external agencies, so providing a status of completed in full, completed in part, ongoing, in progress, in development, not started. And we then aggregated those into the three larger categories you see here: completed and ongoing, showing positive implementation, and not started. And it's important to note that while we're calling these initiatives, which were formal commitments made in a plan approved by a governing body, these plans use many different words for these initiatives. So they use strategies, programs, but we're trying to streamline this here. And the initiatives also have different levels of funding associated with them, and so we're not trying to say here that more initiatives means more importance. Those are separate here. So here you can see a breakdown of initiatives by topic area. Here we have 554, which is different than the number 715 you saw earlier. And this is because these are the initiatives we're focusing on that were directly mapped to community priorities, and were specifically about East San Rafael. So this is why the number has shrunk down. But in the larger spreadsheet in the appendix, you'll still see the full 715 tracked. And most plans were concentrated in transportation, housing, and climate. So moving on to each topic area, starting with housing. So here we'll go through the community priorities and then the plans that we pulled the initiatives from. And the community priorities for housing are related to affordable housing, removing development barriers, and reducing racial disparities. They're more detailed, but I will spare you all the- They're more detailed, but I will spare you all the literal phrases. So this topic area included 116 initiatives, and a majority of the initiatives are completed and ongoing, and with a large amount also showing positive progress. So this was a very strong implementation area. And then here you can see some of the agencies responsible within the city of San Rafael and County of Marin. So they are each responsible for the individual initiatives that we categorized. In transportation and mobility, the community priorities spanned from improved connectivity for underserved areas to enhanced pedestrian safety and bicycle infrastructure. And then moving on to the initiative progress themselves, there are 154. And here there are around almost half completed and ongoing with a large amount showing positive progress. And it's important to note here that there are also a lot of capital projects that have longer implementation timelines. So many of these initiatives have different timelines as well, which can impact their status. And that qualitative narrative from the agency partners will really help provide that context. And then agencies for transportation and mobility that are responsible include departments in the city of San Rafael as well as external agencies such as the Bridge District, Transportation Authority of Marin, and Marin Transit. For economic mobility and development, the community priorities span digital literacy, barriers to employment, and building wealth-creating pathways. Here we can see a pretty, almost even split between completed and ongoing and showing positive progress. There are relatively a larger amount not started, but I think it's important to note that the community priorities for this topic area also address more systemic issues that don't have quick Band-Aid solutions. And the responsible agencies span the city, the county, Marin Community Foundation, and Transportation Authority of Marin. For climate resilience and environmental justice, this spans more systemic priorities such as promoting environmental justice, but also protecting community assets, incorporating community leadership and adaptation planning, and emergency preparedness. And this topic area includes 80 initiatives, many of which are showing positive progress with longer implementation timelines and a large amount also completed and ongoing. So another strong area for ongoing projects. And then responsible agencies include Department of Public Works within the city of San Rafael, the Library and Recreation Department, and then County of Marin Departments and Marin Transit. For parks and public spaces, the community priorities span from increasing safe park access to waterfront access, and then maintaining and renovating existing facilities. So we identified 58 initiatives for this topic area. And here we're seeing a larger amount not started. I think this is also related to some capital projects where funding is currently on hold or waiting, impending. And then we also have a strong showing for showing positive progress. So there are many in the pipeline. Responsible agencies for these initiatives include community and economic development in the city of San Rafael. And then County of Marin, we have the CDA. So I think you're getting a sample of how many agencies are involved in collaborating in this process. And it was a big lift, so really grateful for city staff like Carrie for helping with all that collaboration. And then our last topic area is health and public safety. And so these community priorities revolve around developing community leadership, trust between police and community, and mental health services as well. So out of the 79 initiatives in this topic area, there is very strong implementation progress with around 69% completed and ongoing and 25% showing positive progress. So this was a very, very strong implementation progress out of all of the topic areas. And then responsible agencies here, we have introduced some new external agencies or partners such as Dominican University, Marin Community Foundation, and then many departments within the city of San Rafael. I think this is quite an interdisciplinary topic area, as you can see. So like I said in the beginning, we hope that this will not just be a report that sits on the shelf. We want to make sure that this is useful to you all and your community members. And this tool is grounded in transparency. So we want everyone to be able to use this tool themselves and see the status updates. So I have several use cases to walk you through just to kind of give an example of how this could be used in real life. So for example, a community member might want to measure progress and see what has been implemented for a community priority that matters to them. That, for example, could be increase affordable housing in the Canal District or East San Rafael. And they can go to the spreadsheet, which will be available in January. They can open the Housing Development and Anti-Displacement tab. And then they can then filter by specific values, so they can filter to increase affordable housing. And so any initiative that's related to increasing affordable housing will then be populated on the spreadsheet. So they can see the variety of statuses, or they can then filter it even more specifically to see what has been completed, what has not been started, so they can share back with their community members. The second use case could be for the Planning Division, for measuring implementation progress for a specific plan. So if staff members were getting together at the beginning of a planning process and wanted to brainstorm and set priorities, they could look up a specific plan using the filter method, for example, the San Rafael General Plan. And they could then filter based on what had not been started to see if any of those not-started initiatives were things that they would like to include as a priority for future planning efforts. And so hopefully, in January, you all will be able to use the tool yourselves and hopefully find even more use cases.
Wait, turn on your microphone for once so we can hear you. There you go.
Thank you. As we come to a close, I want to summarize the overarching impact this project and resulting tool aims to have on accountability in this East San Rafael Canal community and functioning as a model for accountability citywide. The resulting tool and framework can help support priority setting by tracking community priorities alongside progress and gaps in implementation. It can support enhanced coordination, encouraging coordination across city departments and agencies, partners, through the shared accountability framework, and it already has in how we collected all the statuses. It can support data-driven decision-making by helping make better decisions through having these consolidated years of planning efforts tracked in terms of what's getting done. And it can provide a clear, accessible ways to share progress with the community and track commitments over time. And I know I mentioned this at the beginning, but I want to reiterate that this work advances the city's 2025 to 2028 three-year strategic plan, and will be informing the East San Rafael Specific Plan as well as the development of a comprehensive, inclusive community engagement program. Bella already showed you the next steps and what to expect, but I want to talk a little bit more in detail about the upcoming drafting sessions and offer a little bit more insight into what that's going to look like. We have invited our partners and cross-departmental staff to help turn this quantitative analysis into a narrative format in order to contextualize the story of what the data is telling. We want to make sure we continue to work with our partners to create an overarching summary of what's been done, what's next, and context on the work that's not started within each topic area. For example, some of these plans have a timeline horizon that go out into 2030, so it makes sense that items haven't started yet because the plan is still active. So that context is really important for the community to know. This narrative will link to a virtual database where the public can dig into the underlying dataset, which provides the individual statuses of all the initiatives like Bella already went over. And once we gather this stakeholder input, JLPD will help us synthesize the report. Also want to flag the details of what we're looking to do in 2026 and the community engagement. We're really excited to report back our progress. And as was mentioned before, we really want to emphasize that these initiatives that are not yet started, we want to ask if they continue to be community priorities. This supports the goal of having a prioritization tool because some of these community priorities came out of prior community engagement processes, and we want to know if these are still top priorities for the initiatives that have not yet been started. And this is part of being transparent about why certain initiatives haven't been completed as well. We also, through this community engagement process, want to solicit input on how to design accessible accountability systems moving forward to consistently report back on progress. I will close with an enormous amount of gratitude for our partners. Eighteen staff across seven different partner organizations made this work possible, and we want to just share so much gratitude for their time. They personally worked with me to provide not only status updates, but also, as you'll see when you get the virtual database, a lot of detail, very thoughtful detail, in the status notes. So it's not just the status, but there's a notes column that each partner took the time to craft with us, and we could not have done this without them. It really has been a line-by-line effort, and it's a huge collaboration. These staff are very busy people, and we genuinely appreciate their time and attention to this level of detail. I also want to give a very special call-out to Canal Alliance, who, as has been mentioned, gave very important feedback at every single decision point of this framework development. And lastly, I would be remiss without thanking our staff across nine departments who collaborated to provide status reports, sometimes hundreds of initiatives long, giving individual status reports with the detailed notes in terms of helping contextualize what that status is saying. We could not have done this without this collective effort, and we are excited for it continuing to be a very collaborative effort for the next phase of this project. And in the spirit of collaboration, I would love to transition to Erin Burnett from Canal Alliance to offer some words as well.
Welcome, Erin.
Thank you, Carrie, and good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. I'm going to get right into the continuance of that gratitude train. On behalf of Canal Alliance, I want to thank the city for your continued focus on the Canal community and for inviting us to be active partners in this work. We really appreciate the city's commitment to transparency, accountability, and centering community voice. I mean, you would think that since it's pretty much aligned with our mission, right? So Carrie already went down the list and thanked all of the individual, city staff members and departments. I also want to add, there are many community partners and organizations that weren't listed that are a part of Nuestro Canal Nuestro Futuro that are really important in this effort as well. Some of them are here behind me in the room. Individually, Mayor Kate, really want to appreciate you for your participation in the Just Cities Fellowship and your commitment to social justice. It's set a tone for a new kind of partnership. And we especially value your recognition that real solutions come when residents lead and when those most impacted have the power to shape the future. The Nuestro Canal Nuestro Futuro initiative shares that dream and vision. And our champion in District One, Councilmember Lawrence Kalati, I want to appreciate you and your continued presence and leadership in the Canal in amplifying resident voices. We are grateful for your partnership and advocacy. And on that note, in continuance of the gratitude, I'm also grateful for our staff at Canal Alliance, and I'll turn it over to Diana Benita as our senior community development planner.
Hello, hello. Not as tall as Erin, but also just wanted to express our thanks and wanted to give a little bit more context on what we're doing with Nuestro Canal Nuestro Futuro. I'm wearing my T-shirt today. We have a lot of T-shirts, if anyone is interested in getting some. And so Canal Alliance and our partners, including the city of San Rafael, launched Nuestro Canal Nuestro Futuro, Our Canal, Our Future, last year in 2024. And this is a resident-led initiative to guide the next chapter of community development in the Canal. And residents of the Canal, as we know, want what people everywhere want. They want affordable housing, good jobs, safe transportation, parks and open space, access to healthy food, just to name a few things. And our NCNF work is really grounded on three core principles: leadership development, authentic engagement, and meaningful collaboration. When we say leadership development, we have a 20-member Consejo, which is a resident advisory council serving as our governance body. And we actually have one of them here today that wants to give public comment at the end. And we also have a lot of our Consejo members participating in a lot of things. Last week, on Friday, a few of us went to San Francisco to learn about India Water Basin, what they're doing at the old boatyard, so we can get inspiration for 620 Canal Street. And we also had a Consejo member speak at the Bay Adapt Summit in San Francisco today about sea level rise and engagement best practices. When we say authentic engagement, we have community fairs that have been bringing together 200 to 400 residents in the Canal to connect with resources, share their priorities, and imagine the future of the Canal. And then last but not least, meaningful collaboration. We partner with efforts like the Southeast San Rafael Specific Plan and Canal Promise Neighborhood Plan to align priorities, identify investments, prevent engagement fatigue, and ultimately see things implemented in the Canal. And this is really a pivotal moment. We have so many efforts aligning to help Canal residents thrive. And I wanted to speak a little bit to this Collective Plans in Action project. This helps provide us a clear picture of what has moved forward and where gaps remain across past planning efforts. And it's a really big deal that we are taking the time to reexamine past plans and are asking why some things haven't moved forward, and we're really holding ourselves accountable and being transparent. And Nuestro Canal Nuestro Futuro, we've developed what we're calling a neighborhood snapshot to be released in the next few months. And this establishes today's baseline conditions and identifies seven priority themes. Similar to these themes, we have housing, climate and sustainability, health and safety, education, economic development, cultural preservation, and transportation. And together, our snapshot in this collective plans in action is going to help residents and partners focus energy on where progress is most needed or to identify what remains to be a priority. And I know we have a Consejo member and a Voces del Canal member that's going to speak a bit, but we constantly have community members saying, "We were involved in the Canal-based transportation plan a few years ago. What's going on with that? The housing element that was just approved last year, what's going on with that?" And we usually say, "Let us ask the city for an update." But now we'll be able to say, "Let's look at this spreadsheet. Let's see what's going on. Let's see what we need to move forward on." And so we're super excited for the future web-based tool to just make things even more accessible for Voces del Canal members, for the Consejo, for other residents, for organizations like ours to track progress. And so this project and the NCNF effort are really aligned. Both are about turning resident vision into action. And just once again, thank you to the mayor, thank you to Mica, Carrie, all of the city staff, and JLPD. This is a really big deal, and I'm a planning nerd. I went to planning school for six years, and so I've been very excited to be a part of this process and to see this happening because it's a big deal. You don't see this happening in other parts of the country or the state. And so just thank you again for prioritizing the Canal community and for building a partnership rooted in trust, transparency, and shared responsibility for the neighborhood's future. Thank you, and I'm going to pass it back on to James.
I'm for Klempt. Anybody else? What a beautiful evening conversation. That was a lot, so thanks for sticking with us and hearing us out. And I just thought I would just say a few closing remarks to sort of put this year-long Herculean effort by so many of you in the current context, which the mayor opened with, which was really about, you know, in this kind of ever-shifting environment we're in, like how to keep focused and how to stay clear on your priorities? Where to focus the scarce people and money resources to best reflect your values as a community? And so we found it helpful to think about two things that are not tactics. But one is guiding principles. To think of this process and all the work that you've done as a reflection of a set of guiding principles that, again, reflect those shared values of a community. And then to also recognize... And then to also recognize that there's an opportunity to think about how to align around desired outcomes. So people love to latch on to like approaches and tactics, which you can get caught up in the messiness of that, particularly when the sands are shifting. Your source of funding goes away, or something else happens, you know, God forbid, a natural disaster. Something happens that's a disruptor. So it's just extremely helpful, again, aligning around desired outcomes, whether it's to promote a more just, equitable, and resilient community. And to have a process that's flexible and adaptable, again, as economics change, as climates change, as federal policies change, you can keep returning to the shared principles and desired outcomes in order to help San Rafael's leadership provide responsive and impactful governance. So with that, I'll open it up for questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, James. Beautifully said. Can we just take a collective breath? That was a lot of information, but we couldn't have had a piece of it. We really needed to look at the collective to understand all the different layers that is before us this evening. And so as much as I know our council is going to want to take comments, we're going to start with questions. Questions only first, and then we'll have plenty of time to make comments. I'll start with the Vice Mayor. Go ahead.
Focus just on questions, but one tiny comment. It was a delight to see some of those very historic documents that I worked on that are suddenly being brought back and looked at. So that was good. My question to you, though, you've gathered status updates, but these are snapshots in time. Those are going to change. So is there an annual update to this, or what's the game plan?
I'll take that one, Councilmember Bushy. It's a great question because the data will get stale. That's why we did this in the first place. And so, you know, this is kind of a prototype, not one of a kind, but a process that we've gone through. Very, very heavy staff-intensive lift. So I think as we move through the process, I think we do need to update and refresh the data, the cadence of that, how often, given the significance of staff time and energy. So there'll have to be kind of a cost benefit on that. But yeah, in order to keep this kind of program going, because there'll be new plans also adopted that need to get incorporated. So we haven't quite figured that out yet, but it's a great question, and we surely will.
Okay.
I can add to that as well. One of the things we found through this status gathering process is that some of the plans already have very routine, annual ways of providing statuses. They just go only to a small body of people, for example, the commission. So there are ways to leverage existing SaaS report processes to make them more accessible by integrating with other plans and using what's already been done to get the word out farther.
Okay. My next question is very specific. Your numeric quantification that you engage in is focused on an initiative. You've numbered, you've counted initiatives. Are those initiatives in any way weighted by big or small? So, for example, does a $10 million initiative that takes 10 years to accomplish, is that counted as one initiative? And a $10,000 initiative that takes 10 weeks also counted as initiatives? Are those counted the same?
So we did not weight the initiatives. They're all counted the same. But the intent is for the qualitative narrative that the department, city departments and external agencies are providing will give that context for explaining some of the funding, some of the focus, because that is true. There are initiatives where the funding might be 10 times as much as 10 initiatives combined. And that's something that we'll have to make very clear in the methodology section, and that will have to highlight those kind of discrepancies in the qualitative narrative.
I agree. It's a discrepancy, and it sort of undermines taking your quantitative amounts too much at face value because things change. And your comment about the qualitative part leads to my next question. A 700-line spreadsheet will be delightful for those of us who love to jump into those things. Will you be distilling any themes or strategic recommendations or any, I guess, suggestions for us going forward? Or are we just going to have a data set?
So the sections that I walked through are going to be chapters of a written report that will distill recommendations and themes coming from the data. We don't expect that spreadsheet to be very quick to come to conclusions for community members. It's a lot of data, so the report will act kind of as a guidepost that one can read and then use the spreadsheet to then look at those specific initiatives if they want to see the details. But the report will distill the kind of main trends, gaps, and then recommendations for alignment.
So it will just be a report on what's in the spreadsheet? There won't be any, "Wow, you guys are really missing the boat on topic Z, and you should do something about that."
So gaps in alignment will show where there are community priorities that have initiatives that haven't started or don't have a lot of implementation progress. So we'll be identifying those gaps and saying that these could be near-term priorities for action moving forward because there are gaps in implementation.
Okay, but it's just out of what's in the initiatives?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. You're a planning nerd. I'm a data nerd, so I love this. I think it's fantastic to see it. I do have some questions around, I mean, it is retrospective, right? And so I'm curious about the case studies of being able to use it proactively. So if somebody says, "I'd like to do additional studies on how education initiatives are impacting the lives in the canal community." How could I use this data? Next question, I'll keep moving on. The county invests a lot, and a number of us within different agencies respond to the grand jury reports. And I was wondering if those sources of data were included, many of the very similar themes and topics. I'm not quite sure where to look on that.
Do you want us to take this one by one, or do you want to?
I'll just run through, and then is that okay?
That's fine.
And then I'm curious about, I mean, this was clearly prioritized within the city as a project, and so appreciative of all the different agencies who contributed. How is that discussed in terms of making this a priority across not only the city but within those other agencies? I'll put that one out there. And then I think along with Councilmember Bushy's question around maintenance, I'd love to see, you know, how is this actually, because it does require so much engagement within the city departments, within other agencies' departments, how we're going to maintain and be able to stay up to date on initiatives and progress? I am a little bit concerned about that reporting process. How do we really make sure it stays current? And the last question, so we've said that this is going to become public-facing. Is that, I mean, you've said we're all going to be able to have access, and I just wasn't sure if that also meant the public will also be able to have access. And then which department that's living under and, you know, answering those questions and working through that? That's it.
I'll take a shot at starting a couple of these, and then I'll hand it over to staff to augment my comments. So yes, it will be public-facing. Any member of the community will be able to access it because it's cross-departmental. It'll live out of the city manager's office. To your question about like the maintenance of the data and the keeping it fresh, I think one of the things that's really unique about this program is there's 20 plans. There's even more plans than that, and we had to manage a scope, a manageable scope. Part of the goal of this work is to, if we're better coordinated in our agency, then we're not going to have 20 plans. I mean, we might want to move toward a more, continue the collaboration so that there's more like unified plan. Obviously, like, you know, transit is different than public safety, but I think that's what we're trying to aim at. I mean, how confusing is it for the community to see, like, for one, how do you find the status of any of these things? They're big, long planning documents, so trying to make both the process more accessible will reduce some of the... And that's the aspirational goal, is that for more coordinated than keeping up with the maintenance of the data and keeping it fresh will be easier. Your question about the data and the retrospective in the future, could you restate that? Because I wasn't really clear what you were asking.
So it's been identified, there are 715 initiatives that have been identified. If somebody wants to go say, "We really need to do a study on XYZ," can they use this source, this data source, to be able to say what has already been done? And should I be doing it, or should I be tapping into one that already exists?
I believe the answer is yes, but I'm going to leave it to the experts who know the details to follow up on my yes.
I would add to that, that as Bella mentioned, there'll be the narrative that complements specifically Section 5, this data analysis, and that's looking at topic area by topic area, community priority area, community priority area, a summary of what's been done, if there's any impact results or big wins that anybody wants to highlight, a summary of what's coming up, and then comments on work not yet started. So we tried to think of it in terms of, if you want the big overarching view of this, you can see the gap analysis, which summarizes across all topic areas. If you want to go into a particular topic area and see a summary, you can go into that topic area and see a written summary of those categories by community priority, what's not been started. And then if you really want to nerd out, you can dig into the database so that you can see the information at three different scales.
Thank you.
We got earlier questions, no?
There was another one around the grand jury reports.
We did not include that in the data set.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. So they got all good answered? Okay. Make sure. Councilmember Hill?
I've appreciated the line of questioning of my colleagues. I had two questions building on their line of questioning, which are, and I may provoke an idea that I would like you to reel back, which I thought I heard the city manager talk about coordination. And in some instances, if there are initiatives that we would consolidate, curious if it would provoke that, because I think where my mind is going, again, I'm in the theoretical because I don't have a specific example to work with. But are there, there could be potentially, if not not harmonized, goals? How would we harmonize them? And, you know, I'm just kind of curious. Again, we're working with counterfactual, but it could work on the spectrum of coordination all the way through consolidation on initiatives between agencies. I'm curious how we would address that or where we would be in that process.
Yeah, I think you're spot on in what you're naming. Anybody who knows me knows, I think, Venn diagrams, and I think you look at these 715 initiatives and all these community priorities. There's overlap in all of them, right? It's quality of life. It's improving the quality of life for the community is the bottom line. So one of the things that Bella spoke to is identifying areas of misalignment in these reports, and I think you're right. So going forward, the more we're coordinated, the more we know what everybody else is doing at the same time and having some real intentionality around that, it would prevent theoretically those misalignments because we would say, "Well, we had the community say this. Wait, we heard the community say this." Well, we can't have two versions of what the community wants for bus routes or whatever it is. So let's go back and figure out how to get aligned. And then some consolidation, I think, would be fantastic.
Thank you. Actually, sorry, go ahead.
And in the recommendation section, that will be more of a roadmap, we'll be identifying where stakeholders or partner agencies are currently working on similar initiatives and where we see opportunities for partnership. So that is something we're specifically looking at. So that coordination and perhaps consolidation, as you all have been speaking about, could take place.
Great. Thank you. My next question is more tactical, which is that in this spreadsheet, I'm assuming that it's going to be in multiple languages? The data, well, I mean, obviously, numbers don't need to be, but any qualitative information would be in multiple languages?
We are hoping, planning to translate it to Spanish.
Okay, I heard planning. Okay, thank you. And then finally, I just wanted to build on James's comment around orientation toward outcomes. And when I was thinking about that, I didn't explicitly see it, but I would love, and I don't know if it's part of this scope or it's something we can develop, which are, how would we measure what an outcome is? You know, how do we take the data to say, "Wow, you know, is it an improvement in employment statistics? Is it an improvement in time to get from point A to point B for employment?" Or whatever it is, but I'd love to see key performance indicators as a part of this. Again, I don't know if it's in the scope of this particular engagement, but I think it's going to be important to build on what outcomes would, what it would mean for the community beyond just a narrative. Thank you. That wasn't a question.
I was going to say, great comment. No, it was a great comment. No, no, well-stated. Councilwoman Yurans Gullati?
Yes, thank you. Well, many of the questions were already answered, but I love planning and data, but I love to get things done. So I love to be able to see all the plans finally in, you know, like a little skeleton that you can follow. And, you know, we have some of the most urgent priorities, like affordable housing, racial equity, and wealth building, that is not advancing as quickly. So this is a beautiful plan, and it aligns with our strategic plan. So I wonder how are we going to prioritize these areas? And also, how are we going to prioritize the resources?
I'll start. Sorry about the back and forth here. So, I mean, one of the reasons some of these initiatives haven't started is because of lack of resources. You know, some of the, some of the things are big, small. Some of the things take a lot, a lot of money. And, you know, the staff talked about, you know, systemic issues. You know, we talk about racial equity as a systemic problem, homelessness. Like, these things are really difficult to solve in the environment in totality. So I think, you know, it's just going to be this ongoing iterative work, and the data will inform and tell us, like, where are we struggling to implement? And where do we need, I mean, part of what the data will tell us is where is there maybe a lack of investment? Or we need to do some work in trying to find funders and other funding sources to move some of these projects forward that are either stalled out due to lack of funding or they're just like systemically so large that we identify as a priority that we want to spend more time and energy on trying to move the needle. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah. And I was wondering, as we look into the strategic plan as well, how are we going to use this for the priorities and resources? Because I know that within the strategic plan, there's year one, two, and three. So how are we going to align it based on this plan?
How are we going to align the strategic plan to this outcome?
How are we going to prioritize the strategic plan based on these?
I see what you're saying. Okay, so we've got year one pretty much in flow, right? And we're going to be coming back to the council in October to adopt the work plan for each of the priority areas in the strategic plan. I think this is really important data to help inform what year two of the strategic plan looks like in implementation. So it will look, it will be part of that evaluation of what we put into the work plans for this year two and three of the strategic plan.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, another question that I have is, I love the virtual database. That sounds great for, like a great tool for transparency. And nor do everybody has that easy digital access. So I know that we have new staff member working on public records. If a community member has a question and they don't know how to use a computer, for example, how are we going to be able to provide this information? Or will we partner with some of our other agencies to be able to help them?
I think that's a really great question, and that's some of the conversation for the stakeholder engagement in 2026 of saying, "We want to make sure we're walking the talk before we come and ask for more from you." And this is what we've created. What would work best for you in terms of accessibility and creating these accountability systems moving forward? This can start that conversation, and we can understand what are some of those accessibility needs because that will definitely need to be considered as part of that process.
Great. And I assume multi-language. Yes, thank you. Okay, let me see. This one was answered. Yeah, I had the other one about the updates. Oh, I have one question comment around the health and public safety and the agencies responsible. And I heard that there are like other agencies that they are not listed in there, but there was one. But there was one specific that I thought the schools would be a great resource. So are we engaging with, with the school district or how are we engaging with them?
We didn't include the school district related plans in this audit at this time. As Bella said, this was really focused on areas that the city is most directly able to influence and has responsibility for.
Okay, I'll, I'll follow up because there's one specific that I think it would be a great partnership. So, yeah.
We can follow up with you on that, just because they weren't necessarily part of the overall scope of this project. Using this data and this conversation to continue to work with all of our partners and the schools, I think, is a really, you know, important piece. So we can take that to city county schools meeting and have a conversation with them about it. I think that's a great idea.
Great. Yeah, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And I actually don't have any questions because I've been involved in this for, not as much as you have, but excellent questions by the council. And it's been so, I can't wait to hear your comments as well because I've been so close to it. So I will now open it up to public comment. And I know that, I think Erin or Deanna said there can be others that are going to be speaking from Canal Alliance or Vosse de Canal. So if anyone would like to provide public comment on this item, now is your opportunity. And you're invited to say your name. Oh, I can see that we're toggling.
About to toggle.
So you can walk really slowly up here while we toggle our interpreter. Chris, wait one second, we're just toggling.
Andrew, can you hear me okay, Andrew?
Andrew, so today.
Yes, I can.
Perfect. So you'll be interpreting consecutively any Spanish, any Spanish public comments. Thank you.
Welcome, Chris, you're on. Ready to go? Okay. Muchas gracias primero que nada a todos ustedes y buenas tardes, querido público. Este quisiera expresarme más sincero agradecimiento por proporcionar esta valiosa herramienta. Como bien saben, hemos estado trabajando arduamente en varios proyectos destinados a generar un impacto positivo en nuestra comunidad. La disponibilidad de una herramienta no solo representa una oportunidad para alzar nuestras voces y hacer valer nuestras peticiones, sino que también refleja el apoyo constante de ustedes, nuestros aliados comprometidos con nuestro bienestar y quienes depositamos nuestra confianza. Contar con esta herramienta tiene un significado profundo para nosotros como comunidad. Nos brinda la capacidad de recibir respuestas concretas y nos aleja de la percepción de que nuestras esperanzas son solo ilusiones o proyectos sin base. Su implementación será fundamental para consolidar nuestros esfuerzos y lograr resultados tangibles. Reitero nuestro agradecimiento con la esperanza de que esta herramienta sea accesible y fácil de usar, incluso para aquellos con poca experiencia en la tecnología. La simplicidad en su uso será clave para garantizar que todos los miembros de nuestra comunidad puedan beneficiarse de sus capacidades. Muchas gracias nuevamente por su respaldo y compromiso constante. I just want to say that I'm here as a community member. I'm not representing right now Canal Alliance because I know my, all my colleagues, Vosse de Canal, are so busy right now. And I just coming to represent community members. Have to leave, have to wait, or?
First.
You've completed? Okay, just to make sure. Go ahead, Andrew.
First of all, I would like to thank you all for, for being here this evening and for allowing us to be present as well and to be able to speak and express our, ourselves. I'd also like to express appreciation and gratitude for such a valuable tool. As you know, we try to do the best work that we possibly can. We try and work hard for the members of our community. And so anytime that we have tools like this one, we value them so much so that we can create a better environment in our community and, and really, you know, propose and, and have more, more trust within, within our community members and, and the city. And so again, we want to thank you all for, for doing what you're, doing what you're doing. And we, I'm so sorry, it was, it was a lot. And I know she said a little bit at the end about creating trust between, between the community and, and the city.
I was gonna say, I thank you so much and I hope so this, this tool is going to be accessible and also friendly for those people who doesn't have a lot of experience in technology and also in Spanish. And it is a plus, but maybe like vocabulary that we use every day because sometimes like we use this kind of vocabulary like, what's going on with this? You know, and also chat GPT, it's not a good tool right now. So thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Cruz Vargas y soy parte de nuestro canal, Nuestro Futuro. Soy nueva. Pero también como muchos me conocen también pertenezco a Voces del Canal. Bueno, lo mío es muy poquito que voy a decir. Solo quiero dar las gracias por desarrollar esta herramienta ya que de verdad necesitamos saber si es que nuestras voces y nuestro esfuerzo han sido escuchados. Gracias por cumplir la misión de mantenernos informados. También quisiera saber si la herramienta de, en, esté en español y sea amigable para las personas con poca experiencia en tecnología como yo. Gracias, buenas noches.
Good evening. My, my name is Cruz Vargas and I am a part of nuestro canal, Nuestro Futuro. I am also a member of Voces del Canal. I am new with this. And first, I'd like to thank everyone for, for developing this tool. I'd like to thank everybody for your mission of providing or making this information available to, to those of us who maybe don't have a lot of, of experience or a lot of access to, to means of getting this kind of information. I am wondering, and, and I would like to ask, if at any point this information will be available to, to the public or, or for those of us who, who do speak Spanish and maybe have very little experience, you know, try, being able to acquire information online.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Collin, members of the city council and to the staff. My name is Mario Desta Lopez. I'm the community advocate for the canal and West Marin at the Marin Community Foundation. And on behalf of the foundation, thank you to the mayor, to the city, the council members and the staff for engaging the canal in this important work. At the foundation, the canal is one of our four priority communities. And I can tell you, listening to the community is one of the most important things. At times, our community in the canal has been overlooked and quite frankly, underappreciated or just underestimated by many. Yet, those same community members that have been overlooked and underestimated feel just as proud to be part of this city as anyone in any other part of the city. So as you continue this important work over the next few months and years, because it will take time, I ask you to please continue to engage with our community members. Put them on city commissions, put them on neighborhood advisory boards, which I know you're already doing. But thanks to the great work at Canal Alliance, Nuestro Futuro, Nuestro Canal, there's a huge amount of people that are ready to serve our city. So I ask you, you know, councilmember Gulati would love to bring you to the canal, you know, come and see. Because they're your neighbors, they're your friends, they're the parents of the school kids, you know, of the children at your school. And they're here, like all of us, trying to live a better life. So thank you for everything you do. And I just ask you to please, please, continue to hear the voice of our community members as we make Santa Fel a stronger place for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council. My name is Al Viteri. I live in Gersel Park. I have a few questions, maybe, majority of the question is, am I understanding what I'm hearing properly? So hopefully, these will be phrased as questions. But what I heard is that in the beginning was this is an effort to look at East Canal as a test case, to create a project that would then be brought forth to use in other projects that might achieve the following results. One would be a behavioral change that would, and so may teach the individuals involved with producing a result how to work more effectively amongst the other agencies that exist that are doing a similar project. So that seemed to be one thing. The other was, this project that you're completing, this spreadsheet, seven hundred and fifteen items on it, is really a point in time. It's a, it's a test to say, hey, how have we done so far? That's my question. Is it a test? Is it telling, how, how far have we done so? How have we done so far? And in that, how have we done so far? Because in, in as much as everybody's saying we've ignored this, that, and the other thing, I know that we haven't exhausted everything. There's some things that are getting done. You know, safety, the fire department, the police department doing magical things. I can't remember the other departments that are involved. So that, that would be part of my question. And then the question, who is this for? Who's going to use this material? Because I know everybody, no, I don't know that. I assume everybody who is working is working as hard as they can to reduce the results that they're achieving. And to add another layer that may be more than, rather than less than they're doing now, has a positive as well as a negative effect. So, I mean, where does that fit into the equation? And I am running out of time.
Thank you for your questions. Make sure that they're answered. Anyone else like to provide public comment? Okay, not seeing any additional public comment. I'll close with public comment. So the questions that I had jotted down and hopefully I captured them all, but feel free to add. Question about how the accessibility for Spanish speakers, kind of across the board, top to bottom. I love that question about how to apply the learnings to other agencies was how I translated what you said on that. I'd be curious just from your expertise, either you or James, because I'm sure you've had that. Had to deal with that before. The spreadsheet, what does it show? We've talked about a spreadsheet, but we haven't really showed it. So if you could talk about that. And then finally, who's going to use this information and report?
Could you kindly repeat your first question?
Sure can. The question was about accessibility for Spanish speakers. And also, I know councilmember Yurans Gulati talked about the technology piece of it too. So really, I think just general accessibility.
I will take the technology and accessibility. We are planning to translate it to Spanish, so look forward to doing that. And in terms of the accessibility of the tool itself, it is currently set up as this dataset as a way to bring the conversation to community in terms of what accessibility and accountability systems are needed moving forward so that it can be a more accessible tool. So this is a first step with that. But we hear that accessibility need loud and clear and want to make sure it's in Spanish as well.
So the question about a behavioral change, if this would kind of catalyze that. I think the word that we've been using in discussions is culture. And I think the hope is that identifying the gaps and opportunities for alignment and partnership and the work that all these agencies and city staff have already done is shifting that culture for coming to the table and working together and, and calling each other in, rather than calling each other out. So it's, it's not saying, it's not to scold anyone. It's to help set priorities moving forward and to make sure that there aren't duplicative efforts and so that the city's resources are, are being wisely used. And then a question about, is this able to say what we have done so far? Because it's a snapshot in time. Yes, that is exactly the intent of this project and can be used to look at what has been done so far in that specific set of plans and time period.
And then, I, I know it was spoken to, but I think it's helpful to say, so how are people going to use this report? So we're going to have it, you have the timeline, it's going to be done in December and the outreach, but we can use it, just.
I think from a staff perspective and city perspective, utilizing the community sentiment and the gap analysis to inform the East San Rafael specific plan, it's also going to support the design of that inclusive equitable community engagement program. And then from the public perspective, it can be a tool for transparency and accountability so that, as, as Bella showed those case studies. So if community members are curious about the status of affordable housing or bike and pedestrian infrastructure, they can go in and see that at a detailed level or see the high level summary of that in chapter five, which will be organized by community priority as well. So that as Canal Alliance members, staff said, they're looking forward to lose, using it for the Nuestro Canal, Nuestro Futuro, as well as I know Canal Promised Neighborhood is looking forward to using it for their plan. So staff, the way staff can use it, community members can use it, and partner organizations can use it.
And one, one thing I'll add to that, that I, I think we didn't speak directly to, but as Deanna mentioned, their engagement fatigue is real and repeatedly engaging the same community members over and over again can be tiresome and frustrating for those in the process. And I think documenting and pulling out the community priorities from past engagement allows those going back to engage the community members to come with specific material to respond to rather than starting from scratch each, each time and acknowledging that we heard you throughout these several planning processes. And, and we're here to report back rather than just ask you for the same material again.
Yeah, very well said. So I'll turn to my councilmembers and I'll have councilmember Yurans Gulati go first. The old justice vice mayor, as I know you've been very involved in this as well.
Yes, thank you so much. Mayor, and first of all, I wanted to thank you for, for being part of the program that really had this ignite, that spark, because I'm really so happy to be talking about this today. So thank you so much to the staff, Canal Alliance, James Lima, Planning and Development, and all the other partners. It's, I think it's a great step, being able to bring over seven hundred initiatives across twenty plans and being able to see it all together. I like puzzles and I'm very visual, so like, okay, now I can actually go. It, it's kind of like a great pathway to find things. So I think that's going to be really helpful. I also want to recognize the emphasis on accountability. For too long, the residents have told us they feel asked all the time for inputs and, you know, but without seeing the results. So I think this framework really responds to that concern. And I appreciate how it centers equity and residents' voices. I think Christine, you said co-creating with the community. I'm like, okay, can we just put that in a sticker or something? I really like that. So as the councilmember for, for the, for this district, I hear directly from residents every day. And district elections have, have given our community a stronger voice at this table. And my responsibility, and I guess all of us, is really to make sure that that voice turns into visible results that is actually working. So I guess the real test of this work is whether the plan and initiatives we track here translate into outcomes people can see and feel. We have safer streets, more affordable housing, better transit, and a stronger trust within the city. So I'm really excited and I, as I said, I like to get things done and see results. So I really look forward to continue this work. And again, thank you so much to all our partners because as Mayor Kate said, this cannot be done on our own. So we really need to have as many people involved as possible. And a special shout out to our community for being involved and really bringing the voices. They work so hard and they are so talented and we have amazing leaders. So we need to continue having those conversations and really co-creating so we can improve our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bushi?
Thank you. This is a very exciting project. And I absolutely want to echo councilmember Lauren Scalati's focus on results. This is a very interesting database and that's all great. But what is it going to do in the real world for our people? That's what we're interested in. So look very much forward to getting your completed report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
I'll add on. Thank you. I think over the last ten years, and you did go back quite a bit in terms of the reports, our community has learned over time and we've gotten better and better of the agencies working together. And I know there's a strong collaboration right now. And I know there's a strong collaboration right now um outside of the city, but within Canal Alliance, Community Extra Marin, Legal Aid in Marin and Marin Promise. And I see that that group, that collaborative are really the gatekeepers in terms of the next study. And that to me is where we need to be really careful of if there is a next study, it's that collaborative that should tell us the study is needed or not needed. Um, in my perspective, I mean, we we the city's invested seventy five thousand dollars and thank you. Um, I don't know if that amount is is there's going to be more because it seems like we just added on more work. So I'm not sure if or everything that we've talked about is already included um within that initial contract. So but that's for other times, I'm sure. Um, I think this is really important. It is about results. And and I say a term that I say with love, but it's the so what, who cares? Right? We could all do this work, but it's the so what, who cares? That we really need to make sure it comes to something. And and I think the work that this is is producing is going to be super valuable if we put the next phase in place. We need to make sure that that infrastructure um supports it all going forward so that we can really answer the so what, who cares? Because it is so valuable and so important. Um, and I think the questions that were brought up tonight were very valuable um in terms of thinking about how we use it in the future. I love the conversation around behavioral change. That's really what it's about um for all of us. Um, and I think that um really appreciative that this came forward um to us and and I look forward to hear it, seeing the final report and looking at the data. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I will not question any of my colleagues' comments. I like it, what they all said. But what I might add to what they've said already is to um to continue to express appreciation to all the stakeholders, but specifically our resilient community members in the canal um who uh continue to work through uh survey fatigue. And hopefully on the other side of this, this is an opportunity for their voices to actually eventually work toward the outcomes that everybody wants, which is a vibrant community. Uh, thank you, Mayor Kate, for your work with the fellowship to bring this uh to life. Um, the metaphor that um I'm I was able to come up with was around uh rowing in one boat together. Which direction do we want to pick? And how do we row together? Um, um, what I'm understanding based on the number of initiatives is that it's not for lack of intention, but perhaps that we can uh row at the same time and in the same direction. So I appreciate that we are taking the time to do that. Uh, and again, I love, I didn't say this already, but I love the notion of centering on the principles. The ones that stuck out to me were transparency, accountability. Uh, these are things that I look forward to understanding more uh and making certain that the community has a voice that we can draw a line to that moment in the future that we can look back from. Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to give a shout out to Director Mooney as well, who's the Director of Digital Services and Open Government, because he, along with the city manager Christina Lealovich, participated in the fellowship with me. Um, because I took the class and then I would have homework, no kidding. And then they would provide all the information that I had to turn in. So um we we it's okay, it was a collect collective effort. So thank you. And it really does show that it's been seeped um deeply in um throughout the organization. Um, and it's lovely to see Supervisor Dennis Redoni here. We keep talking about how we're not doing this in isolation and the county is an integral partner. And I hope that after you hear this tonight, it'll spark um sparks in your own mind about how we that this can be brought to the county, this approach, this framework. And so we can force multiply the work that we're doing here. So thank you for being here. And it was interesting hearing your comments because many of the comments were what I was thinking as well. And I'm going to reiterate them, not to just repeat them, not because we know that you're listening to everything, but they're so important, important to prevent engagement fatigue that Deanna said from Canal Alliance. So in the final report, in the fellowship, my final report that I literally handed in, it was a slide deck actually that we presented to about, I presented to about fifty people. That was one of the key things, that whether you're a part of Transportation Authority of Marin or the City of San Rafael, we kept asking the same questions over and over. And so that is critical and I'm really gratified that all of you really picked up on that and it was um echoed by the community as well. We asking the same questions over and over. We do not need more studies. I mean, that that's my takeaway. We do not need more studies. What we're going to do, we have so much information. It's looking at what's in front of us, prioritizing it and figuring out how does it come into work plan at that second year of our city work plan for the ones that we control. The other comment that I heard, and James, you had so many good things that you said and Councilmember Hill already talked about some of them in terms of shared outcomes, but the intentional collaboration. I love intentional collaboration. We collaborate all the time, but being really intentional. When I hear that, it's drilling down so we're on the same page. And like, oh, I think you said this. Is this what you said? Is this what you meant? And really making sure that we're in alignment. And that's what we're hearing. And thanks to Carrie and Bella, the stakeholders already know that we're interested in this and they're already showing up in those conversations. So we'll be able to continue that. And this work is foundational. Today is foundational and I appreciate the the metrics, the action, you know, what's going to happen. None of that can happen until the foundation goes. And it's just like when you're building a house, it's kind of boring when the framing is going up. Everyone wants to wait until the fixtures get in and the furniture and everything else. This is the foundational work and it is cutting edge. I mean, that's why James Lima and his team are here because you are doing something. And I can see, I I was exposed to what's going on in the nation in terms of community planning and this is really on the cutting edge. So some of those questions we might figure out and have to answer as we go along. Now, how does this unfold over time? The questions and comments about reporting, those are excellent questions. And it's okay if we don't have all that figured out because we're doing something that we haven't seen in other communities. So in in closing, I love the concentration on data because if you're not measuring it, then you're not paying attention to it. And narrative, because what does it mean? You know, how do how do we interpret data? And so both of those coming together is really, I I was thinking about the metaphor I was thinking about. Councilmember Hill was, we're using all that to write the city's future story, data and narrative. This isn't just the looking back. It's like, how do we take this and and move it forward? So none of this would have happened if it wasn't for Carrie and Bella and your huge lift. When I saw the figure seven hundred and fifteen program action initiatives, most people would be daunted by that and just, I don't know. They might give up or they might be a little bit overwhelmed. And not that you weren't overwhelmed, maybe you were a little bit, but the two of you uh plowed through it and brought in the people that needed to have the conversations. The two of you could have sat in a room and just done it all. And that is antithetical of what we're trying to do here. And the fact all the time that you took to meet with the stakeholders, to bring them along, that we're going to benefit from, not just tonight, not just next year, but really, I believe we're we're kind of changing the way that we make community decisions here and how residents are seen and heard and participate. And it wouldn't have happened if you weren't doing that foundational work. So I've been looking forward to today for so long and I'm thrilled that my call council colleagues are as excited as I am. So uh so thank you. I know that you're here for another day and a half still getting a tour of San Rafael and this work will continue to work um to have this fair fruit going forward. So so thank you so much. As this is a informational informational report, I would ask Councilmember Yurins Gulati to make a motion on this item.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I will move to um make a motion to receive the informational report and presentation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushi.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurins Gulati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Thank you so much. Before we adjourn, we do have open time for public expression. This is anything that is not on tonight's agenda, we'd be happy to hear from you and now is your chance. Not seeing anyone, I'm going to close the public uh comment and adjourn this meeting. Meeting's adjourned. Good night.